Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, I'll try it again. Good afternoon, everybody. All right, I know it's cold outside, but we are grateful for the warmth in here and the love. This is the November the fifteenth, 2018, meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trust is now called to order. At this time, I'm going to ask Dean Kade to lead us in our invocation.
Could we bow heads, please? We come once again before thee who knows all and does all. We thank him for this day that we have not seen. We thank you right now for what you are going to do in this meeting. We thank you for how you continue to watch over us, God and directors. We thank you for continuing to cover our students, faculty and staff, continue to touch our leader and her followers, this board. Just come in and do only you can do. We give you praise and we give you honor, and we claim it right now in the masterless name of him who does all. Amen.
Amen, amen. We are acknowledging the presence of the cabinet, of our president, also deans of our colleges who are here today and all the faculty and staff, and all of you who are here today. We acknowledge your presence, and of course, at this moment, we're going to move into our meeting. As you will note in your board materials today, our board's meeting, we have several items on the agenda, and so the next item listed on your agenda is the roll call, and Secretary Pendleton, if you will please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Walker. If you could just signify yes when I mention your name. Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corvill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Simpson. We have a call.
Thank you so very, very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September the twentieth, 2018, board meeting you have in your November fifteenth. Board materials, the minutes for the September twentieth board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth?
Move with your group.
Right?
Second.
Right, it's been properly moved and seconded in the discussion. Hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the minutes of September the twentieth board meeting, 2018, is contained in the board materials November the fifteenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Board of Trustees' 2019 meeting calendar as contained in the board materials for November the fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' 2019 meeting calendar as contained in our board materials for November the fifteenth, 2018.
The movement, Chair.
Second.
All right, probably moved to second. Any discussion? All right, hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the Board Trustees' 2019 board calendar meeting as contained in the board materials for November the fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is the Audit Committee Report. The chair recognizes Audit Committee Chair, Trustee Cole, who will report the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee meeting. Trustee Cole.
Thank you, Chair. The Audit Committee met today to take action on one item, received reports, own and discuss two items, and voted to go into its second extension to discuss litigation and other matters that are deemed confidential by state law. The committee voted to recommend the full board, to the full board, the approval of the September twentieth, 2018 Audit Committee meeting minutes. The committee also reviewed and discussed completed internal audit reports with President Glover and Internal Audit Director Adrian Davis, and discussed the external quality assessment report. As I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for November fifteenth, 2018. You have in your November fifteenth, 2018, board material the minutes from the September twentieth, 2018, meeting. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion? All right, hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is approved. Trustee Cole.
Okay, that approves, concludes the audit report.
All right, thank you so much, Trustee Cole, and the other members of the Audit Committee for your service on the Audit Committee. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. The chair recognizes Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Corvill, who will report the actions and information from items today, Finance and Budget Committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. We had three action items for approval that we'll be recommending to you. One has to do with the minutes. The second would be with the institutional revised budget, and the third with an execution notice of intent for TSU to sever from the TBR for capital management. And then we had two additional items, a report on enrollment and student recruitment as along with a marketing plan. And then the report for the TSU Foundation was deferred because we had such a robust discussion about other things that we really didn't have time to do that one, although it'll be back in our agenda for a called meeting on January twenty-second. So, you know, again, the three items that we've discussed, we talked, we're going to talk a little bit about the Finance Committee's review of the budget. I'm going to get back to the recommendations in just a minute, but just to essentially for the board to recall, there are three different timelines for budgets. There is a proposed budget that's done in late summer, early fall to the board. That's a preliminary budget based on very initial projections. There is this budget, which is called the revised budget, and it's prepared this time of year and normally submitted for this meeting. So that's what we'll be talking about today. And then there's an estimated budget one last time as we get later in the fiscal year. The reason for these three things, and the difference between the revised budget we'll be talking about or what we talked about today in the initial budget was is that we have more firm numbers regarding enrollment and expenses and other flow-throughs from the state. So what I can tell you is that during our committee, we had a very long discussion about the revised budget in that it unfortunately did not come in as expected from the proposed, given the updates that we received in enrollment and other revenue sources. But both President Glover and Vice President of Business and Finance, Chase, presented and discussed the revisions. I will tell you that we went through in great detail the differences between the original proposed budget and the revised budget, and why those things changed over the last few months. We also talked about the projections of some short-term and long-term mitigating factors, and then we talked about, you know, again, what we're going to do to prepare ourselves in case, again, this budget in itself, this middle revised budget is not, might be a shortfall. So we will be, we did vote to recommend approval of the institutional revised budget to the formal board. And then thirdly, we went and we also discussed, and Dr. Glover and her designees, regarding authorization for TSU to execute a notice of intent to sever from the Tennessee Board of Regents on capital management functions. And so that was the other item that we had from a recommendation perspective. So as I mentioned earlier, the Finance and Budget Committee did vote to recommend the board on the minutes, and so those materials are there in your board materials. So on behalf of our committee, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of September twentieth, 2018, for the Finance and Budget Committee as contained in the board materials today, November fifteenth, 2018.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing non, after the, hearing non, the questions of the motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018, Finance and Budget Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. Trustee Corvill.
Okay, as I did mention, we had a very lengthy discussion about the revised budget, institutional budgets, went through detailed information regarding variances to date, and then action plans that the leadership team is instituting to essentially meet the plan as we go forward. So the Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full board approval of the institutional revised budget as contained in your packets today, November fifteenth. So on behalf of the committee, I want to, I will move to approve the 2018-19 institutional revised budget as contained in the materials today.
And Chair, I would just indicate, because it's a budget item, it require a roll call vote.
Okay, very well. Thank you. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to provide a short discussion. Is that, is that okay?
Well, we'll leave it to the chair. We'll have to acknowledge whether or not this is appropriate time within the context of the board meeting and cabinet, so he can whether or not he wants to acknowledge that.
Can you give me some indication of what, this is something we discussed already?
This is regarding on the budget, revised budget.
Did we, this is something that we shared in the committee meeting that we discussed there?
I'd like to provide the faculty perspective on some of the items that we discussed this morning that requires further conversation.
All right, we, one of the reasons, and let me just say for clarity, one of the reasons why we attempted to have a robust conversation in our committee meetings today was to mitigate all of these questions and work through these issues, and so that we could do that in our committees, I think we had a very, very intense and robust conversation, and allowed for questions in that setting. So I would have to decline that so that we can move forward, if we can, and keep those in our committees, because we do have that. We spent certainly almost thirty, forty-five minutes just on that alone today beyond.
I'd like to remind that I'm not a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, and I cannot make motions in the morning. So it's up to you to get the faculty perspective or not. That's the decision by you.
I would just clarify that in a Finance and Budget Committee meeting, you have the committee members and all board members are invited.
Present.
And present and attend, and I believe we had everyone in attendance at that meeting. And while Trustee Sekman is correct that he cannot make a motion, there's obviously a discussion that can request that someone make a motion related to any agenda item.
All right.
Mr. Walker, I'd like to move to the previous question, please.
Thank you. All right, so the motion's still on the floor for the previous question, and is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, this time we're going to have a roll call, please.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corvill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
No.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. All right, all right, the motion is approved. All right, Trustee Corvill.
Yes, the last item is the approval for the authorization for TSU to execute a notice of intent to sever from the TBR on capital, on just the capital management function. So the Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full board the authorization for the university to execute a notice of intent to sever from TBR on the capital management. And those materials, of course, were not only discussed in our meeting, but also are in your materials today. So on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the authorization for TSU to execute a notice of intent to sever from TBR on the capital management function.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing non, the question is on the motion to approve the authorization of TSU to execute the notice of intent to sever from the Tennessee Board of Regents on the capital management function as contained in the board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. Trustee Corvill.
Yes, Chair Walker, this concludes my report from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you so much, Trustee Corvill, and the other members of the Finance and Budget Committee for your service, and certainly for the, again, for the robust conversation we had today, and of course, we continue to move this forward with all those items we are all very concerned about. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. The chair recognizes Academic Affairs and Student, Academic Chair, Trustee Affairs Chair, Trustee Martin, to report out the actions from today's meeting. Trustee Martin.
Thank you, Chair Walker. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on two agenda items, and to receive information on four other agenda items. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September twentieth, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting minutes, as well as the approval of an off-campus academic dual enrollment program at Knowledge Academy's charter school. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received reports on SAC's ten-year reaffirmation review, the College of Health Sciences Nurses Program, and Academic Affairs and Student Affairs General Matters. As part of the Academic Affairs Report, Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Mosley, updated the committee on the institution's efforts to enhance its rankings in general higher education publications and HBCU rankings. As I stated earlier, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing non, the questions on the motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November fifteen, 2018, board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion is approved. Thank you, Trustee Martin, and the other members of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for your continued service to this very important committee. Trustee Martin.
As I mentioned, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of an off-campus academic dual enrollment program at Knowledge Academy's charter school. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the off-campus academic dual enrollment program at Knowledge Academy's charter school as contained in the board materials for the November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you for moving seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the off-campus academic dual enrollment program at Knowledge Academy, Academy's charter schools contained in the board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Thank you again, Trustee Martin, and the other members of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for your continued service. It's a very, very important committee. All right, the next item on the agenda is Executive Committee Report. As Chair of the Board and Chair of the Executive Committee, I will report the actions and information items from today's Executive Committee meeting. The Executive Committee meeting met today to discuss and vote on specified committee agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September twentieth, 2018 Executive Committee meeting minutes, and the approval of the board's policy zero zero six, policy governing board consideration of tuition and mandatory fee increases. The Executive Committee also heard an update from Vice Chair Cole on the President's annual performance review, and a report from Secretary Pendleton. As I stated, the Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes September twentieth, 2018 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials of November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. And on behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials of November the fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved to second. Any discussion? All right, hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth, 2018 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November fifteen, 2018, board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. As referenced, above, the Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of Board Policy Zero Zero Six, policy governing board consideration of tuition and mandatory fee increases as contained in the board materials for November fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. On behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve Board Policy Zero Zero Six, policy governing board consideration of tuition and mandatory fee increases contained in the board materials for the November fifteen, 2018, board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing non, the question is on the motion to approve the Board Policy Zero Zero Six, policy governing board consideration of tuition and mandatory fee increases as contained in the board materials for November the fifteenth, 2018, board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the President's Report on Athletics. The material for this report, items are included in your board materials for today's board meeting. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information on, or appoint her designee to report on this agenda item. President Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to call on our athletic director, Ms. Teresa Phillips, to make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glover, and thank you, Board Chair Walker, Dr. Walker, and Dr. Cole, co-chair, as well as the other trustees of the board. I really am tremendously honored to be able to present to you all this afternoon, so I'm excited about that. I'm Teresa Phillips. I'm the Director of Intercollegiate Athletics here at Tennessee State University, and I've been in this role for sixteen years. I came to Tennessee State in nineteen eighty-nine as the head women's basketball coach, and was really privileged to coach some of the best players that ever came through here. So that makes it easy to be a successful coach when you have good players. We were able to win four OVC championships while I coached, and I was able to do a lot of things with a great staff. Now, I'm an athletics administrator, so I am really working very diligently to be impactful nationwide. I am very involved in the NCAA on several committees over this period of time. I presently am a member of the NCAA HBCU Advisory Committee, which really looks at a lot of the issues that fate, that the HBCUs face nationwide with intercollegiate athletics. Also, I am very, very privileged to be on one of the most powerful cabinets, the Division One Women's Basketball Committee, that makes all the decisions for the major women's basketball championship of the NCAA. So those are exciting things that I've had the opportunity to do representing Tennessee State as AD. Tennessee State, as all of you know, and formerly TSU, Tennessee ANI, has, you all know, a storied history of excellence in athletics. This is no secret to those of you who are here, if you're on our board. We have really, more than any other probably school, had three iconic coaches here on our campus. Number one, John McLennan. He's the father of the fast-break offense, has won three major college national championships representing Tennessee State. All of you know our legendary Coach John Merritt. He has won probably the fifth most college football games ever in this nation. He has numerous players that he has sent to the NFL, including Richard Dent, pro-Hall of Famer, and we had Claude Humphrey here on campus Saturday. I think he was trying to toss the corn, but Dr. Glover probably took it away from him, but anyway, no, it wasn't you. It wasn't you. But he had a good visit with us this weekend. John Merritt is in all of the Hall of Fame, and then last but certainly not least, our famed Tiger Bell Coach, Ed Edward S. Temple, Olympic coach, and international and national Hall of Fame. So that history and the mark that TSU has made, she has made nationally, internationally in the world of sport. And we're still doing things. We still aren't through. We still have student athletes who are playing in NFL. We do have a great NBA player who unfortunately just got traded recently from the Philadelphia Seventy-Sixers. We have several young men and one young lady who's playing international basketball professionally, and we have a couple of Tiger Bells who are really making their efforts to try to get back into the Olympics. So we're excited about those kind of things. With that having been said, what's going on now? You know, where are we now, and what are we doing athletically now? Tennessee State, the university, not the athletics department, is a member of the NCAA, the National Collegiate Athletics Association. And I say that because I think sometimes people think the athletics department is a member of the NCAA. No, it's the university. We have Division One affiliation. We play football's championship subdivision. There is two different divisions, Division One in football, and we play in the championship subdivision. There is a bowl subdivision that the Power Five schools play in. We are a member of the Ohio Valley Conference with eleven other schools that are like us and in a good geographic area. Five of those schools, including Tennessee State, is in the state of Tennessee. The three are in Kentucky, two are in Illinois, and I think one each in Missouri and Alabama. That is the OVC. Our budget, and we may have just taken a little budget cut, as you all know, but our budget hovers around ten million dollars. We are subsidized primarily by the university's general fund and the student athletic fee. We do, of course, have revenue branches within athletics, our ticket sales, our guarantee gains with football, men and women's basketball. We have several grants, NCAA grants, fundraising, and other things that end up making up the revenue side of our budget. About one-third of our budget goes back to the university in forms of scholarships. So, you know, that being said, that takes a good little chunk of it. Our overall budget, and I do need to say, is the lowest in the conference. We have the lowest budget in the OVC, and our student athlete fee is the lowest in the state of Tennessee. That's probably a derivative of our enrollment, but also the student fee number is the lowest also in the state. TSU sponsors fifteen sports. We have eight women's sports, we have seven men's sports, football, men and women's basketball, men and women's cross-country, men and women's tennis, men and women's golf, indoor, outdoor, track and field, men and women, and volleyball and softball. We're required to have at least fourteen sports to remain Division One. Our students, we have about two hundred fifty-five right now. We may go up to two seventy-five at the most, student athletes, and that doesn't count cheerleaders and dance team that kind of are housed under athletics. We really don't count them in that particular number, but that's the amount of kids, young men and women, because they're not kids that we work with. We view our students as just that, students first and foremost. That's what they are to us in athletics, and we treat them like that, and how we deal with them speaks well to what our focus is in athletics. We're progressing and graduating the young men under our leadership and under our watch up in athletics, and I think that's what we're supposed to do first and foremost. It's an intentional effort on our part. It's intentional what we do with our student athletes in athletics. Recent report, the academic progress report of the NCAA, we are retaining and progressing our student athletes at a ninety-four percent rate. That's not our graduation rate, but that's the academic progress rate, which is a fall-to-fall measurement showing each semester, do we retain the young man and woman back here at the institution, and do they meet the eligibility requirements to still, you know, perform athletically? Those requirements are very similar to the Complete College Tennessee Act requirements that first went in, that you have to have twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five percent towards graduation. You have to pass a certain amount of hours every semester. That's hard to do, but we have really labored very diligently do that, to do that, and we're being pretty successful. We want to do better, but we're being pretty successful, I would say. Our graduation success rate is sixty-three percent. Our federal graduation rate is fifty-three percent. And that is a testament to a lot of good leadership, a lot of good leadership within athletics, and a lot of support here on our campus, within our athletics department also, and with our coaching staff. Sometimes we have to pull them along kicking and screaming, but coaches kind of work in a silo, so you have to stay on top of them about what our mission ultimately is. Our teams have had varying degrees of success, and that, we do play ball in athletics. We do keep scoring athletics, and we have had varying degrees of success, especially within our conference. We've had very good success overall playing other HBCUs, but we are in the OVC, and that's where championships are won, is within your conference. So we have some work to do. Our coaches know that. But I do want to let you know that we have had good individual success with our students. Our students are being All-Americans still. They are winning individual championships in the individual sports. They are making OVC All-Conference teams. So I want you to know, last year, we had the Defensive Player of the Year in men's basketball. We had the top indoor athlete in men and women's track and field. We had over twenty-four medalists in women's track and field in our OVC championships. We had over twenty with the men. We had two women basketball All-Americans. We had two football, which we have had often five, six, seven, and eight football All-Americans last year. We only had two, but, you know, we have done well with those individualized things that our athletes have done. The women's tennis team won the HBCU National Championship Tournament last year. That was huge on the part of us, and the HBC National Tournament. We had ten athletes who won OVC Medal of Honor last year, which is good, four-point-oh for the whole year, and you had to be at least a sophomore. You couldn't just do it as a freshman, but that was very good. Fifty-five percent of our student athletes last year had a three-point-oh or higher. Fifty-five percent. That's pretty good. So we're very pleased with the progress of what we're doing on a lot of counts, with how we're dealing with our individual So we're very pleased with the progress of what we're doing on a lot of counts with how we're dealing with our individual student athletes. It's kind of easy for one who's not inside college athletics to really say, you know, we don't care about the behind-the-scenes work. You know, we just want to see what happens when you get out on the field of play. But the behind-the-scenes work is really what we do in the Department of Athletics. The results are what you see out there playing ball, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. And I just really wanted to take a little time today to give you some information, introduce you, the board, to some of the inner workings of athletics administration, what some of all those people just are doing, working in athletics. We have some really competent, committed, really talented young people and other people who work for athletics, and I want you to know about them. Let me introduce you to some of those areas, so you'll know what we're really doing to really promote the results that you end up seeing. First of all, we have academic services. That's upstairs. If you ever get a chance, go upstairs on the second floor. We do have three full-time employees there who work with our student athletes. They have mandatory study halls. They are, that is monitored. We do tutorial management. We utilize our faculty for tutoring. We do peer tutoring upstairs also. That's done all through the evening, too. That's not just during the day. We have face-to-face meetings weekly with every freshman and every transfer student athlete. If you're here for the first year, we look at you every week, face-to-face, to talk about academics upstairs. I think that's very, very significant, and it makes a difference. We also, they also play a part, and we do a lot of recruiting, obviously, in athletics, and so they play a big part in the recruiting process. We do pre-evaluations of all of our prospective students, and so they handle that. We've got to make sure they're going to be eligible NCAA-wise, and they're going to be able to be successful students here at TSU, so they do that up there. And also, we have a lot of on-campus meetings with prospects and parents and guardians, and so that area up there is very involved in that. So that's academic services. Athletic media relations, let me share something about that with you. There may, we have three full-time employees doing that, but we just lost one to the University of Hawaii. He's leaving. We just gave a little going away yesterday. Real talented young man, and you hate to lose them, but you're, you know, we really hate to lose them. We have three full-time employees. We use a graphic designer that helps us a little bit part-time, and we have a lot of game-day part-time workers. Just putting on a football game, a volleyball game, a tennis match, you have to have people working that and taking care of a lot of things. So Media Relations does that. They really serve as a liaison between TSU Athletics and the local, regional, national media, NCAA, all that kind of thing, our alumni. They're the chief public relations unit for athletics, the branch of athletics that does the PR. They maintain our website. I don't know if you've ever gotten on our website. It's TSUTigers.com, but if you go on the university website, you just click Athletics and go straight to that. They are the ones who do that. They maintain that. They do all of our print media, they do our social media, all our video content. They do all the coverage for the 15 sports teams. We have a vibrant social media platform with multiple Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter postings every day, every day, and they do that. They handle all of our game-day operations, including the live stats. You can look on, you get live stats. So there's somebody having to do that and put that in as these games are going on. Often you're at the football game, but we have a volleyball game going on. Often you're at the football game, we have a volleyball game, and we have a track meet going on. These folks are having to do all of that work, okay? They do all the schedule cards, posters, publish the media guides, the creative content for social media and the video creation. All of that is at the core of media relations, and I'm going to just tell you this, and some of you in the business know this. If it's not on social media now, then it didn't happen. It didn't even happen. So that is a good part of what those young men and women up there do. Compliance. This unit, you know, we can't have athletics without compliance. You ever play sports, you know a lot of cheating and a lot of other stuff can go on if you don't keep people in check. You've got to watch what you do, and this area is in charge of that. Their charge goes deep and wide, and they're one of some of the best in the country. And I wouldn't say that except for they get called by the NCAA and other people to come and teach other people how to do what we do. That's how good a compliance division that we have. We have passed every NCAA audit, and we get audited constantly with everything we do, OVC audit and the university state audits. We have passed all of them because this unit assures us, the board and Dr. Glover, that there is institutional control of our athletics programs. That's what you don't want to ever have, is lack of institutional control, and this is what this unit does. They do it by providing educational support for me, for our coaches, for our athletes, for our boosters, for our alumni, and we need to probably have a thing for you all to make sure you know what should be being done and not done, so that someone won't trip you up as a board member, and we have a violation, have to write you up, Ms. Martin. So we don't want to do that. So everything we do is monitored. Every phone call is monitored by our coaches. You just can't call kids whenever you want to. You can call them at a certain month, and after they finish March of their junior year, and then you can't call certain sports until September, and then you can only call them once a week, and then there are dead periods that you can't call them in. All that is monitored. You can't have someone, Bill Freeman, come over to your house and eat one of our student athletes. There's a form called an occasional meal form. That has to be monitored. They can't work for you, Dr. Cole, at the bank without permission. They can't even have a car on campus without us registering it, so the NCAA won't think that somebody over at Cadillac Place gave it to them. So, you know, and that is checked by the NCAA. They don't just trust us. They check us, and this area does that. They do student athlete orientations. They, certification of eligibility is huge. Dr. Cade's area helps us with that. We don't really certify them as eligible, but we have to start a lot of the paperwork, and then Dr. Cade's area up in admissions and the records department, they have to do that. Every semester, we have to see. What did they take? What did Dr. Segman take? What classes, what did he say his major was in? How many hours did he pass? Did he take the right courses? Did he pass enough courses therefore he's eligible to play? So this is the area that does that, and we need them, and we're going to keep them because they're great at it. I have a few more. Digital streaming, digital streaming and radio broadcast, that's within athletics. The OVC had a digital platform. We've moved to ESPN+. If you look on ESPN+ and you see a football game, a men and women's basketball game, you probably think ESPN is at TSU, and they have us on TV. No, athletics department has you on TV. We are producing that game. We are doing the color analyst. We are doing the graphics. That is our responsibility. It's a non-budgeted burden that the presidents of the OVC, including Dr. Glover, approve, but it's also a huge opportunity. Who doesn't want to be on TV? You know, it's a huge opportunity. So we also have radio broadcasts of all our football and men and women's basketball games, so that's another part of what we do within athletics. We have an equipment area, very important. I know you all don't believe it, but somebody has washed all those clothes, somebody had to inventarize them, somebody has to calibrate every bat, somebody has to make sure all those helmets are reconditioned and the shoulder pads. Somebody has to make sure we're not going to have staph infections and all of that that we do. And that's a seven-day-a-week, 12- to 15-hour job. People really think we just wear nice warm-ups around here, but we've got some people working and doing some stuff in athletics. Let me share with you a very important area, sports medicine. This unit is charged with providing effective and efficient care to help prevent, manage, and treat athletic-related injuries. Within our division, we have four people in-house who do that. We need about seven. We have four, but we really want to provide each student with the opportunity to really perform at their highest level, and they have to be healthy to do that. We work with Tennessee Orthopedic Alliance also. We have a contract with them. We have a primary orthopedic surgeon, Dr. Damon Petty. We also work with St. Thomas EMT, and they are at all of our major practices and at our games. We also have an internal medicine doctor, and we have a couple of dentists, because teeth do get knocked out in sports, so we have that. We have a neurologist, which is something that's new, and I know you all are aware of the incident that happened with one of our student athletes at our Vanderbilt game. Christian Abercrombie went down. Our head athletic trainer ran out to him. Concussions are not abnormal in the game of football, and because our neurologist was there and went out there with him, he looked immediately and knew that it was more serious than a concussion. And those, that minute, those seconds really probably saved Christian's life, that that neurologist was on the sideline. I want you to know that was Tennessee State's neurologist. That was not Vanderbilt's neurologist that was on the sideline, and it made a difference. This group also handles all of our insurance. I mean, you know, we have surgeries, and we have doctors, and we have injuries all the time. They have their insurance, work that has to go on within sports medicine. That's within athletics. We have NCAA concussion protocol, which starts when the young man and woman first gets here, and they're tested, and anytime they bump their head or say they have a headache, there's a protocol that we have to go through. We also drug test our student athletes, and we do that with the help of drugs-free sports, but this sports medicine group here who works for us over in Gentry Center and works for Tennessee State, they kind of handle that testing when we do do our random tests. I'll just end with strength and conditioning and the ticket office very quickly. Strength and conditioning is very important. We have two full-time people in there. The core goal is to really develop that student so that they can have the best strength to prevent injuries also. They work closely with all of our sports teams. It's important for all sports. Football tries to dominate them, too, but we get our, we make sure, Mr. Freeman's laughing. He knows they'll try to use them to death, but that's a very critical area if you want to be successful in athletics, is have strong strength and conditioning. Ticket office, we use the Ticketmaster system. We have two full-time employees there. They also work for the university if we have a big concert or plays or something like that, but they primarily, of course, sell athletics tickets. They follow all the strict depository rules of the university, and they are audited twice a year by internal audit of the university to make sure that the money is going where it needs to go and is getting deposited accurately. I'm about finished with telling you about some of the internal things that we do. We do a lot of other stuff because we probably travel as much as anybody else put together at the university. We do a lot of purchasing. We have a lot of internal things that we do also, but that's a good snapshot of what we do on a day-to-day basis in athletics. I do want to let you know, we have some great upcoming basketball games coming up. Our men will be playing at Vanderbilt, at Kentucky, and at Memphis, where there's be the Battle of Penny and Penny. The women will play a too-hard a schedule, so I'll just leave the women out for right now because I think they bit off more than they can chew. And that's about it. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. I think a broader discussion of athletics needs to be had so that we can get some direction of what we want to do, how good we want to be, how we can fund ourselves so that we can be successful. But I did want to give you that overview in this first opportunity.
Wow, wow. Well, thank you so much, Teresa. As I travel around the country, I mean, you are one of the most respected athletic directors, and I mean that sincerely. I hear it all around the country and the work that you do and the department area that you've built and the hires you've made have been just amazing, and we appreciate that. And I saw firsthand the response of Christian Abercrombie and how TSU Athletics was right there and, you know, to advocate for the neurologist and that to happen, and it's just so important. And so this board is certainly behind you, and we look forward to a future of greater funding, we hope, to get, to get you off the road there. That's so important. I just have one question. Any update on the FAMU game coming back to TSU?
We're working on it. We have a little southern on the side, too.
I hope so, too. A little southern on the side would be great. Now, that would be great.
But Dr. Glover may want to share that with you. She's working pretty diligently with a group, and myself and Dr. Johnson, and I think we got it, we have it coming up for...
Why don't you go ahead and tell them?
Well, we do have a group that we believe can pull the game off.
All right.
And we will not be playing until 2020, we hope. Both FAMU and TSU are pretty much on the same page to be willing to go with it, and we're looking at either a two- or four-year agreement, so. We hope for good things back in Atlanta.
All right. That's great. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, this time we're going to have our president's report, and this time we'll hear from Dr. Vinny Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Walker, Co-Chair Cole, the members of the Board of Trustees. This is the president's report. We're going to start with our students. This is the GPAs of our incoming freshmen. You can see from Fall 2016, '17, '18, how 2.8, then went to 3.07, then this past year is 3.1. The ACT score similarly is creeping from 18, 18.7, this year is 18.9. So we're looking at the type of student that we're trying to admit. Of course, that's still not the numbers we want to see, but it's growing. Our enrollment trends, yes, our enrollment is down, is down considerably. It was down to 7, 780, we're just under 7, 800 this year, and we do have a robust plan, as we discussed earlier, to bring the enrollment back. A lot of it's marketing, a lot is a ground game, recruiting, but we're looking to how we're going to bring the enrollment back up by getting a quality, the quality of student who can work through the system, proceed through the system, and graduate. Because as you know, the model has changed. It's not based on the numbers anymore, as it could be. We still had between 900 and 1,000 students who we just could not admit this fall. Despite their talking to us, their parents coming to meet with us, we know that we have an objective. This is not unsuspected. This is not a surprise. We just know that since the new funding formula is based on productivity, it's not based on the numbers any longer. But we do have, given that, we still want to get the enrollment to a respectable level, so we're looking at around 8,000 immediately, and then continuing to grow as we grow the type and quality of student we're looking for. I will tell you some of the things that contributes to enrollment declines that we've said before. We know the lack of financial support to either attend TSU or return to TSU. I've told the board how we lose good students because we don't have the money for them to come, even first-year students. We want to talk to them about coming to TSU, and they'll say, well, I got a full package at MTSU or a full package at ANT, but we don't have enough funds to give everybody the full package. So we have a formula that Dr. Cade has worked out as to how students, some students can get more funding than others based on certain things, timing is one of them, but we're working hard to get more funding and more financial support to attract more students. And then the admission standards, as we market the admission standards, we know that, you know, we all believe that quality attracts quality. So we're going to do all we can to continue to market our new standards. We put our press release, and we've talked to students. Other students on campus are talking to students about how happy they are to sit next to somebody who has a respectable GPA, so we get good comments about the students, from the students about the new admission standards. And then there's the effects of Tennessee Promise, which allows the high school graduates to attend community college tuition-free, essentially tuition-free, and it is hard to compete with free. And so we have, we beefed up our plans of how we're going to recruit at the undergraduate level and also at the graduate level. This shows enrollment by college, the trend. Every college last year of 2018 had a decline in enrollment except public service. Public service is the only one that had an increase in enrollment over last year. The prior year was a steady increase, and you see a decline in agriculture. That's because of the wake-up of the new life in physical sciences. So those two numbers of those two schools are not, is not based so much on declines and increases as it is a reorganization of a new college. So let's go briefly through the enrollment management plan, some of the things we want to do. We have strategies both at the undergraduate level and at the graduate level. So we want to talk about the strategies, strategic outreach, strategic marketing, communications, the technological infrastructure enhancements, as well as the capital improvements, and then the funding for scholarships. So the outreach, we want to increase the recruitment outreach to high school populations within the state of Tennessee and those in a 250-mile radius. We have a really detailed plan of going to the high schools and meeting with the superintendents also, as well as the guidance counselors, to ensure that we could better market TSU and take TSU, that that's the type of outreach, to go to the schools where we have a good yield and continue and go from there. And then extend it to the community colleges, to the transfer students. We've done it somewhat, but we've really beefing it up this year. And then the non-traditional students and international students also part of the strategic outreach. It's more than just that, but those are some of the key points. And then the marketing, to make sure we focus on advertising the new admission standards and advertise the student successes. We have the students doing videos of why they came to TSU and the successes they have approved, they have achieved, the new student life initiatives that we have, and then the capital improvements, the new buildings that we're doing. We want to increase the emphasis on social media and the e-recruiting and mobile application, online marketing. So we want to get in the world of where the students are located and what they respond to, and they really respond more, as you know, to the social media than anything else. And then to communicate a little differently, enhance the communication strategies for our current students and for the students that are in the recruitment process, those we're trying to recruit. The way we communicate to them is vital, so we're working on a communication strategy as well as the telephone campaigns to the students, to the seniors. We have the call-in tree and then those who've been accepted are ready, those who are about to apply, those are transfer students, and then the re-admitted students. And be timed in our communication so we can be competitive and give more information as much as we can to the students and then be more personal in the invitations that we do. As far as the capital improvements and technology, we're still working on technology infrastructure, including the processes and how we manage our customer relations. Then the students who started and didn't complete applications, those, just how are we going to assist them in completing the application process? We do have a team in one of our locations, a team that does that, that helps the students, they're completers, to get their applications in. And then those who have enrolled, did not re-enroll, plans that go after those students. And then the welcome center that we're, that one of our alums just is beginning to underwrite a substantial portion of it, that's the front door of our university, so we're going to use those mechanisms. And then, now, the strategic funding for scholarships, it's a given that we need more scholarship dollars so students can come to TSU. And we're going to work with the Office of Institutional Advancement just to ensure that we are generating more funds for our first-year students. Because once we get the students here, we want to find a way to keep them while they're here, too. And then develop a plan for increasing the need-based scholarship. We will lot this based on academics, but then we want to increase the need-based scholarships also, as well as the private sources from corporations and others, foundations and others. The plan is very robust for the graduate school, even with the standards, new admission standards for the undergraduates, the competition from Tennessee Promise at the undergraduate level. At the graduate level, it's kind of just, it's an open door for graduate students, so we're taking advantage of there by increasing the marketing of TSU to TSU students and to TSU alumni. We're having different avenues to recruit the TSU students who are here now and encourage them to attend graduate school, as well as meeting with our alumni, speaking with them about taking courses and coming back to graduate school. And the historical of our colleges and universities, the four-year schools, we're looking at them in a different light, asking them to attend school at TSU and to develop, we're developing partnerships with them for offering degrees at those institutions. And the social media game, the networks with social media, and some other things, fostering the partnerships that we have with the various locations, surrounding locations, Memphis and Nashville and Jackson, Tennessee, and Chattanooga, Clarksville, Atlanta, fostering different partnerships. And then developing accelerated programs we have, such as Executive MBA program. And then just following up, students who were here in graduate school, but then they dropped out and didn't complete their advanced degrees. So we're going to go back to them and see what can be done to, for them to come back and complete their degrees. Now, budget and finance, the budget update, we did write a letter to the campus, informing the campus of the measures that we're going to implement to address the current budget. The objective is to make sure we have a financially sound university and ensure our future financial health. You know, as HBCUs, you know that you're always going to hear that they're about to become extinct, this HBCU is going to close down. I mean, that's just, we hear that jargon all the time, but we know that we are financially strong and when people say that, we just take issue with them and show them the numbers that we have and where we headed. And then from a budget perspective, the decrease, we have a decrease in enrollment. We acknowledge that because we derive a lot of support of our money, our revenues from our enrollment, from the tuition. So when that goes down, then that really affects the entire budget because that's our large revenue source. So we can do three things. We can either increase the revenue, we can decrease expenses, or we can go into reserves. And we have committees that we're not going to reserve. So we can either increase our revenue or decrease expenses, a combination of the two. So we have a 10% reduction in our operating budgets. Meaning we're going to have a hiring freeze, state-funded positions, including reclassifications of positions. We have, hold it up on our temporary personnel and then we're having some other restrictions on operating funds. So we're going to do this through operations, with our operating budget, to make sure we can get the budget back on track. And we're reviewing professional services contracts to look at the consultants that we have and the contracts that we have to see what types of savings we can generate there. So now, one thing we did say, the cost reduction measures are not including the faculty layoffs. So that has been something that's been circulated, but that's just not true. The budget's not based on faculty layoffs. Then it was moved to strategic planning. We started strategic planning a while back, but now we've reorganized the strategic team and the processes that we're doing. And we reviewed the established priorities that we had. One was to increase the four-year graduation rates to ensure the campus health and safety, to improve customer service and diversify the revenue streams, improve the campus infrastructure, you know, sort of four-year graduation rates, that involves recruiting at a higher level so that the students can go through the system and graduate. Then we had two more, there's an additional focus for strategic planning, that is putting emphasis on teaching and learning and on research. I thought I'd throw in the salary adjustment so we could, you could see that we did an across-the-board increase that was made effective July 1 for all employees of TSU payroll as of June 30, 2018. The faculty received a 2% salary increase, staff received a 1.5%. And then we brought the salary up for the PSC faculty up to $55,000 as the minimum level. And department chairs brought those up to $90,000. And the cabinet members did not receive salary adjustments. Now, let me move to accreditation. Attending report is due September of next year and then onsite visit is March of 2020. The new emphasis in the SACS rules, the new emphasis on student placement, so we're looking at student results and making sure that our students are placed, we're putting a lot of more emphasis on student placement. So we've been meeting, they've been holding meetings to provide the updates to the campus community, get campus input because the campus that drives the accreditation, no matter of any unit, including the campus, including the overall university. And then the committees are meeting regularly in connection with the statutory information process. And then we have the quality enhancement plan, we have two working committees that have developed two proposals, one's a global competitiveness, the other's career readiness, and we're going to try to have these ready by the end of the semester. And then the several programs have been reviewed for accreditation, business, cardiorespiratory, psychology, they were all successful. And then physical therapy, public administration, speech, all those are coming up during this academic school year. I worry about the school of nursing. We were, we did get a two-year accreditation extension from ACN and we were granted the continued accreditation based on good cause. And now we're working on a plan for sustainability of the nursing program. That was very good news, we were able to save our school of nursing and we're working hard for the sustainability part of this. So let's move to grants and research. Just listed the amount of awards that we've had over the last four years, what our goal is for this year, $55 million. And that's where we're, TSU ranks in the top five HBCUs and receive research funding. You know, we compete with Howard and FAMU and Jackson State and others, so we compete with them every year and sometimes we're three, or four, or five, we're in the top five almost every year. And then the worry about our endowment, it's growing even though there are parts of growth, you know, it's based a lot on what's happening in the stock market, but it's also, it grows based on the amount of contributions that we receive. So we're looking at the current endowment around $60 million, which has increased quite a bit over the last few years, five years or so. So we want to grow it to larger than that and we're meeting with, we're getting new numbers in with institutional advancement to see where we want to be with our endowment, how we can grow endowment more. The groundbreaking, as you can probably, has anybody been around, know that we broke ground on two residence halls during homecoming and the Health Sciences Building during homecoming, as well as Alumni House and Welcome Center. So we have four groundbreaking during homecoming. They asked us to wait, well, not wait, they asked us, could we put them during the time when they would be here? So we had one we were going to schedule before that, but we decided to listen to their request and we did all four during the homecoming. So we still, we're working through that now to get to Dr. Johnson, I think is spearheading that with Mr. Chase, with facilities. And so we're really excited about that. And so the next one is a schedule of when, there's a construction schedule, when we plan out, we show when it puts a break ground, when we like to complete those. And so we're looking at the completion dates down the road, but we've done the good part, we've started to construct, we've started, we've broken ground, and we complete them probably, mostly will be done in 2020, maybe 2021. All right, we have some legislative priorities. I would like to say that yesterday, some of the lawmakers came to campus. The TSU alums were there, Senator-elect Gilmore, Representative Love, and some of the others who were from both sides of the aisle, they did a tour of the campus. They love coming to TSU. So we took them around the campus, to the Ag Building, to engineering, the sponsored programs, Health Sciences, and they were really impressed. And so the information that we've asked them to take a look at and to present this year in the legislature, and we're still working on these priorities because we're asking for, we're working through the things that we need, we put things through to the governor, THAC is playing a role in this, and so that's where we are with our legislative priorities. So that is the president's report. I do want to, before I end, I want to just say thank you to everybody, to wish you all a bountiful Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for, from James Shaw Jr. to Christian Abercrombie. So we just have a lot to be thankful for, our student successes from the award-winning research and our national recognitions. So we just have a lot to be thankful for and so we want to wish each and every person a happy and fruitful Thanksgiving. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Madam President, for your report and we really appreciate your vision for this university and as we continue to move forward and making certain that all of these initiatives come to fruition, we appreciate the board's work in that. The final item on the agenda is the board chair's report. I'll just take a brief moment just to share a couple of things with us before we are ready to leave. One, I do want to just share how incredibly, just incredibly blessed we are to have such extraordinary folks on this board, such a spirit of creativity and energy around moving the needle forward. The two very important things that stand as our priorities as a board, I think the public needs to hear that, that we alongside this president really are concerned and want to see enrollment increase and that's something that we are appreciative of, particularly in terms of the presentation we received today, really a strategy. Of course, one of our vice presidents has shared with us a wonderful strategy, a five-point strategy to really help move that along and we are focused on that and we are squarely focused on that. We do believe in the approach of raising the academic standard. We don't want kids coming into school just to beef up the numbers but unable to graduate, so we do want to make certain that we do raise the academic bar and I think that's an appropriate approach. However, we do recognize that there, that tuition, that enrollment does need to increase and that is a priority of this board. Secondarily, this board is incredibly concerned and focused squarely on deferred maintenance and of course, you've just seen many of the deliverables that are coming down the pipe in terms of the dormitories and a variety of things around. So we are focused on those items and we are aware of many of the other things that may be happening, customer service issues and things that may be prohibiting a variety of folks from coming alongside this incredible institution. But this board is focused on those things and our committees and the work that they're doing. It is robust and very intentional and we are committed to making certain that the spirit and history of this great university comes to pass. Do want to recognize and just some extraordinary awards that happened since the last time we were here. Dr. Edith Mitchell, who received the Jefferson Award in Philadelphia, she was the first woman of color and female to receive this incredible award representing Tennessee State University and we're just so very happy and proud of her. I think that deserves an applause. Also, of course, we had an opportunity to share together in DC and we were so very, very proud, actually the day before her award, we were very proud to sit in Washington DC and to witness during the Thurgood Marshall Foundation ceremonies, our president received HBCU President of the Year Award and we were just so proud of that, think that deserves a hand of applause. So again, thank each one of you so much and we appreciate all of you and as we prepare to close, I just want to thank again, join in with our president, to thank each one of you for being here and then just really hope that you have a very blessed holiday season. Know that this board is working on behalf of this university, each one of us serving at the pleasure of the governor of the state, but certainly our hearts into this work to make certain that this university continues to lead the way in so many areas. So we're very grateful and thankful. I'm sorry, Madam President, I yield to you.
You just triggered something. This is the Governor Haslam and this is the last time we can have a chance to thank him publicly for what he has done for higher education in the state of Tennessee, for TSU and for the LGIs and for putting together such an awesome board. And so for that, I think we should give the governor a round of applause.
And we look forward to working with the new governor and to make certain that the initiatives of this great school go forward. Again, we thank each one of you. There's no additional business before us. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded and yes, question is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Or if you'd like to stay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.